Is provided by Casidian through CenturyLink. And last September, because we were looking for a new system, we extended the maintenance for six months, which ended in March. I went back to CenturyLink, they would do no less than two years. No exceptions. I got the six month through there, but they told me no less than two years at about $19,000 a year. I told them, no, I would find another way to do it. But we weren't going to spend $40,000 or something, we may not have very long. So anyway, I proceeded to try to get a maintenance agreement with DNM Communications out of Fort Wayne, who are certified by Casidian to repair the equipment, and they do Allen Counties, all their equipment. Well, when I got with them, they then sent it to Casidian first. Casidian wants, I hate to say this, but they want your right and left hand in order to get this done. We first started out with a credit report, then we had another piece that I went ahead and signed just so we could get to this point of about a 60-page contract. Just so we can get software and phone support. And that's this right here for $2,051. I can't keep that copy. Casidian's really difficult to work with. I did not realize, since I dealt with CenturyLink, the phone company-
Well, if we go next generation, are we going to get rid of these guys, or are they still?
Yes.
So they also know there's an end date to their service.
Right, and this is for six months. We're doing it for six months with the option of another six months.
Are we feeling, how soon do you think we can get Next Gen, this thing, this whole program off the ground?
That leads me to another point that I was going to bring up.
Well, let's just stay with Casidian then for a second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, so here's what you're saying, and we signed this, we haven't signed the contract. Okay?
Did he bring it to you?
I got an email to me.
With the, what did you sign?
Just something to, agreeing to go forward with this is all. To go, to, basically for them to put the work into developing this. Before they even talked, somebody had to agree before. Nothing, nothing contractual. It was just a, you agree that you would like us to submit to you a bid, a-
Letter of intent.
Yeah, basically.
All right, so this, this is just a support. They want $3,000 for six-month support. Is that basically what it is?
For just the software and telephone support.
Of course, we need a firmware program, fixes firmware program updates, firmware program upgrades. In order to take advantage of this service, the Rescue Star system must be at least B4.0 or 5.0 or later. Do we meet that one?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then, that's $285. Then, we have Rescue Star hardware support covers hardware repair after the original 18-month factory warranty has expired. In order to take advantage, the Rescue Star system must be at B4.0 or 5.0 or later, so.
Yeah, that's optional for hardware.
I'm looking at that, that's $1,285, $1,236 that's not figured in.
Correct.
All right, so firmware support, Sentinel software supports $2,220. Sentinel optional modules, $546. Now, are you, are you thinking we need the $3,051, I mean, we're going to need the three components?
Right, in order for me to have DNM, again, that'll be an additional amount from them.
Yeah, yeah, this has nothing to do with their bill.
No, nothing at all. And I don't have it there quote until Casidian approves them to service our equipment.
So Scott, what would happen if we didn't sign this, and we didn't have this contract, and you had it on an individual basis? Would they work with you?
There's no such thing, that's the problem. And we cannot buy parts from them, and that's all part of that contract. We can't even purchase parts from them without signing this contract, which has pages of legal protecting them against, or for their copyrights and their equipment, and on and on and on it goes. That's why I told you I really was a real thorn in my side trying to-
Yeah, I know, you made it clear, you made it clear that it's just, this is just a small $180,000 gun on their back.
DNM Communications did say between the time we got, this is, between the time we got this contract signed and one with them, if we had a real emergency, they would assist. That doesn't mean they can buy any parts for us. So if it was parts related, we'd have an issue, so.
For $3,051, we can sign this six-month support, and then we'll have a bill from DNM.
And then there'll be a DNM.
Okay, all right, we're clearing that. Now, before we go on, tell us then about Next Gen.
Okay, as far as-
Or whatever, you were just bringing up-
...what we have with Next Gen.
Well, you said you wanted to talk about that too, so.
Correct.
Okay, let's talk about that.
Next-generation 911 equipment, we sent out, a little over a month ago, we sent out an RFI to the vendors requesting what they had available and pricing. This is what, this is what we got back.
And this is on the regional basis now?
I'm sorry.
This is on the regional basis?
Right, as a group purchase.
This is a group purchase, okay.
Correct. And that list, all the different counties that are involved. We got that back, we did request to meet with the Northeast Indiana Commissioners, I guess, and Maders now. And we were instructed by them to bring it to our local Commissioners instead of presenting it. So to keep this thing moving, I wanted, I wanted to present this to you. What Tim Lee with Allen County, he's the one that made the, or did the first RFI. We met last week, I take that back, the week before, and he agreed to do an RFQ, or Request for a Quote, for all the counties. Using the RFI, fine-tuning it, you know, to what some of the counties wanted. And I'm at the point where I need to ask if that is okay, if he does that, represents Whitney County as part of the Northeast Indiana 911 Consortium.
I see the four quotes that are here. You got a quote from Frontier, Motorola, Z-tron, and Casidian. Do we have sufficient funds at this time to meet any of the four?
Yes.
So honestly and truly, we're not in a, we're not in a funding crisis project here.
No, we are not.
That was my thoughts too. And the reason I mentioned that, guys, is because I've worked hard with Tim Lee. Tim Lee is, Tim got, Tim kind of got the lead because quite frankly, Allen County's got the most spent. And so Tim was kind of the right guy to, to take the lead with this. So again, your request is to let Tim take the lead?
Take the lead, write the quote, the request for the quote.
Quote, yeah.
Now, and I have a question on that. It does, are we required to do an RFP, or can we do, can we work off an RFQ, a quote? The difference being, if we go out for bid, we must take lowest bid. Quote, we can work off of that quote and decide how we do it.
Okay, let's go back to your statement, because that statement's untrue.
It's untrue.
We take the lowest and best bid, okay?
And then it's determined by dollar amount to fit into certain categories?
Yeah, I'm afraid we're probably way over a quote situation here, I'm afraid, okay? So I would need to double-check on that, but these quotes are all over the board, I'll say that. Well, I guess, I guess Motorola's, Motorola's extremely high, the other three aren't, aren't all that far off, I guess, but.
My concern, and we're trying-
What funds does this money come?
911 funds that are in our existing funds right now.
I thought we sent all that to the state?
Nope, that never was required. We never had to send that to them. It was one thing that got saved.
I thought you showed zero balance in there?
Nope.
It's moved to the new fund, um, under-
1222.
Yeah, it went out of two funds, wireless and that, into the state mandated fund. Says, um, Whitley County, nine, yeah, 1-2-2-2, 1222.
Yeah, we have $330,000 in that fund.
What's the emergency phone system, E900?
That's the old defunct, that's the landline, and then there would have been-
What's the number of the new system?
1122, I'm sorry, 1222.
1222.
As of July 1st, that had to be moved out of two accounts, which was landline and wireline, into one account.
They didn't take any of that.
So again, we have the money. The money is not really the issue.
Right.
We're not going to counsel and asking for money or anything.
All right, I don't want to break this down.
No.
Not with the budget being higher than what we got coming in each year.
And the main reason to go in with all the other counties is the fact we all have the same equipment?
There's, there's multiple, huge savings.
Yeah, in purchase grant.
In purchase price.
One county was going to, and the other can't.
And then we can work from any department, and for bid, everything's compatible. And then we share our database cost, there's, there's interoperability. We can switch, Allen County can switch a portion of their 911 calls to roll over to us, to DeKalb, to surrounding counties in the event of emergency. Likewise, we can do it depending on geographic area. We can then transfer our 911 calls, major catastrophe, power goes out and a generator didn't come up, we had that happen. Flooding, whatever, you know, if we were put out of service, just a matter of hitting a few keys and it's transferred to one of the other counties. We've never had this before. We've never, before had the cooperation of a large group like this. It's exciting.
After this is done, what cost do you save per year for a service contract?
It's not going to be much different. Service is listed on there.
Right, it's the second part of that, of that quote. The quotes broke into two things, the initial and then the maintenance over five years. So you really got to look at both of those.
Correct.
I mean, you could be the lowest price with the equipment, but the highest price with the-
Very much so, yes.
So it's going to cost about $20,000 a year?
Correct. So it wasn't much difference in what we were paying with CenturyLink, so that's, that's kind of a wash. The monthly recurring cost for database management and the dedicated lines, trunks, it may be a little less with, depends on who we're going. There, there's, you know. Three of the counties that are part of the consortium have already either gotten their equipment or ordered it. They couldn't wait any longer. One, DeKalb County built a new center, they had to have theirs up and going. Noble County went ahead and purchased because they had grant money that had to be spent before such, such date. LaGrange County, I believe, was something along that, I can't recall what their reason was, and they were all part of this. And they weren't extended the pricing as a group. However, as a group, we are pushing that as part of what was going to be an RFQ, and again, it's going to be an RFP then, is that what I'm being told?
I, you know, I'm not going to say, because I'm, I don't want to stick my neck out and say how that's going to work. I would rather imagine, okay, here's what I visualize in my head, you're going to have to go with legal on this one. There's going to have to be an intergovernmental local agreement, okay? And, and, and so the, so the State Board of Accounts is going to let firmly understand who's getting what, who's paying what for what. That, that's just going to-
See, that almost needs to go back to the Commissioners group again.
Well, individually, I don't, you're talking about the caucus. I think you've, I think you've pled your case to the caucus, and they think the caucus has, that this makes sense to us. Now you're getting in the nuts and the bolts of this thing. I mean, it makes sense to us that we're going to save, Willie County's going to save money by going together in this. But you got to get, you got to have that vehicle to make it happen. Where I thought you were headed, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, is Tim Lee want to be the consultant on this, the person who heads the project up? The only other thing-
He's agreed to do it.
The only other thing that could happen, and the very greatest thing could happen, would be, and I just don't see why these companies wouldn't want to do this, but that is, to quote to each individual county. I mean, I don't know, and I don't know why they'd want to do that. I mean, the whole idea here is to try to buy en masse.
Why would we want an individual? We're going to get it cheaper by buying them.
They'll still-
That's what I'm saying, but, but it's the vehicle to get there. How are you going to?
Why do I want a quote from somebody that I know I'm not going to purchase from? And why would they be interested in giving to you?
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not with you, I apologize.
As, as an individual, is what he's saying, why would, why would he, they give him a quote as an individual if they're not going to buy from him?
Well, they, well, they give me a quote, but it's going to be a whole lot higher than what as a group, as a group, this group can get. All I'm saying is, how do we dot our i's and cross our t's and make the State Board of Accounts happy? I know, I know what I want to know is, who are we writing the check to? That's what I want to know. Who will, Whitley County, who will, your fund has the money? We've already determined that. Money's not an object, but who's the check going to get written to? Will, will, let's, let's just say-
I don't know, that's-
I know, I know, and these answers, they, you have to have these answers. Let's say Z-tron's the winner, they, they, they come in with the best price, we're going to go with Z-tron. Does Z-tron expect a check from Adams, Allen, DeKalb, Elkhart, Huntington, Staben, Wells and Whitley? Or do they expect one check?
This, of course, isn't in writing, but there was a couple of them that said there's no issue with individual counties, right, you know, once this is done, they've quoted it.
That would be the ideal way to do it.
That they would do it as it went into place, because not everybody's going to be ready for the equipment at the same time.
That, that would be ideal. All I'm saying is, where we're going to run into trouble is if Z-tron says, we're given one quote, you all divide it out, and we want one check for our quote. So I'm just saying, how, how are we legally going to, who are we going to write a check to? And, and, and what's the State Board of Accounts going to say? So if that, and, and if, if it comes to where the, the company says, we only want one check, we're going to do it Northeast Indiana, then we need to have what's called an intergovernmental local agreement that simply says, we're going to, Allen County's going to take the lead on this on a $5 million purchase, and Allen County's going to pay 1.4. Adams is going to pay $179,000, Whitley's going to pay $273,000, and so on and so forth. The State Board of Accounts would go for that, they, they would go for that, but, but it has to be in writing. And then that would allow us to write the check to Allen County.
If we did it that way, but if the, if the vendors would come back at, as your equipment, as you place your order with this timeframe, you pay for that, that equipment-
That's a, that's a win-win, Scott. That's a win-win.
Yeah, and I-
Couldn't be happier, couldn't be happier. That, that, that makes everybody, that makes everybody happy. We got the lowest price available, and we were able to just write the successful vendor a check. That's, that's a win-win. That's what I, would be the very best way to do it.
This is going to be our equipment?
Yes.
Not the consortium?
Correct.
I wouldn't want to write a check to Allen County, I would want to write it to the vendor because someone, oh, well, you're in consortium, so we need it. No, this is our equipment, we paid for it on this date to that vendor. You know?
So it takes it back to, where do I go from here? As far as-
Before you go there, Scott, did DeKalb, LaGrange, and Noble all buy the same equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
The same, they bought the same that we as a group are interested in.
Who did they buy from?
Frontier.
So we're more or less locked into Frontier, or those three?
We don't have to.
No, I know, but to, they're kind of sitting out there waiting for somebody to saw that limb off then, aren't they?
But it is a low bid, isn't it?
I didn't, I didn't compare bids to the thing.
Yeah, it is, it is a low bid.
Leave that up to you directly then.
And that equipment's already being used by DeKalb and Wabash County, so we're familiar with the, the equipment and reliability. And the company that services the network, and that's another thing that will be gained by this, is a network, so we're all tied together without any single point of failure in network or equipment. Again, mine goes down, there's no point of failure because somebody else is picking that up, and it's just going on seamless, so.
Is this, will this system allow you to receive text messages?
Yes, it's I3 compliant. I3 is any technology that can communicate 911 to the center.
Okay.
And that could be everything from OnStar to whatever, so.
Okay. Okay, all right, so you're wanting to know where to go from here, right?
What's the correct, yeah.
Well, there's no doubt that we like program, but we would like to write the check to the successful vendor. Is that right, gentlemen? Is that what we're saying? We want to write the check to the vendor.
I think what we're doing here is, is we're trying to just take advantage of the group pricing, and that pricing will come to Whitley County, and we'll write the check.
Much Frontier said yea or nay to that one?
As far as individual?
Yeah.
Frontier was one of them that said yes.
Okay.
They had no issue with individual.
Okay, okay.
And I did, and, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I, the original budgetary quote from Frontier was close to $250,000 without the maintenance part of it. So that's-
250 to 130?
That's like half.
True.
And it was just a budgetary though, so.
I know, no, I know, I know, I know, it's straight from numbers, so.
So what you're asking is, you know, can we have Mr. Lee negotiate for us? Is that really what you're saying right now? Is that okay?
Right, that's what I'm thinking, as an unpaid consultant, or will he want to be paid for this?
No, no paid, it's all part of the-
Just want to be, just want to be clear.
And if he can write, are we back to then a proposal, request for proposal instead of quote? Is that what we're looking for?
Do you buy the maintenance package separate from the other package?
That's how it was done in the past, how this is, I'm not sure.
Separate or-
Separate, you pay it annually. Again, that's my understanding, without anything locked-
You can do that, you can do that on a quote. You can do that on a quote, you don't have to have a full block bid. 130, and we look at the maintenance agreement separately. So that's, that's my, that's my thoughts on it.
One main thing is specify that these are individual checks from each county.
That's huge, that's huge.
And the maintenance is a separate part of that.
You'll quote the equipment, and then you'll quote the maintenance. You're getting one year free warranty, is that right?
Correct.
Because I only see you start in year two. Is there any negotiation as to how many years maintenance? I see they break them down by the year, but, you know, can you say, well, I only want a three-year maintenance plan?
Oh, I, I would think so. We requested five years.
Right, 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 I didn't know if that was going to have to be the way it was-
Life of, life of equipment, that kind of stuff.
See, that's why, that's why I'm saying it's a separate issue that, that we need to, we need to pursue the actual equipment first, and do that on a quote basis. And did, does anyone want to make a motion to let Tim Lee act as our-
I would similar that. Sign it.
Motion, second, any discussion? If not all favor, raise your right hand. All oppose, the same sign. So ask him to negotiate for us, and of course, it's, it's, we've got the-
I almost want to say we got to have the individual, because I just think paperwork would be horrendous if they want one check for, for everybody, so.
As I'm standing there thinking, there was quite that discussion at one of the meetings, just because of when each county needed equipment. You know, we couldn't expect, Allen County, if they're two years out, I'm just, I don't know their check-
No, I got a good point.
-to come up with the dollars today, so that's, I know we kind of pushed that when we met with the vendors and stuff, so.
All right, do you think in his negotiation, you say you know, Chairman says he knows him, if Allen gets a 2% save discount, will the other counties get the same thing?
Right, it'd be across the board, whatever the discount is.
It will be across the board.
And we're still, we're pushing as part of this, that if there's any, if LaGrange, Noble, and DeKalb, if they would have benefited as being part of this, if they were getting refunded. Now, it doesn't do anything for us, but they were a big part of this, just circumstances forced them to move on, so.
Okay. All right. Now we got to go back to Casidian. Before we go back to Casidian, given Tim the, the go-ahead to get this thing moving and negotiate, can, can we, and knowing everybody's going to be on a different time schedule, do you think it's possible to get Whitley in six months to the-
Possible, but highly unlikely.
So do you think you're coming back to us with another one of these?
I hope not, but it's a possibility, yes, yes.
Do you have the money to pay for this?
Yes.
Do you have the money?
For that right there?
Right.
There's even a line item for-
We're not going to go to counsel and ask or anything for it.
There's a line item for that.
And then I need a motion to either approve or not approve the Casidian $3,051.
And this is like an extension to the existing agreement, right?
This is a whole new, and I will come back to you probably with the one from DNM. Once this is done, I call them and have them send- I call them and have them send, um, they're gonna give me two different quotes. One on time and material with a clause, and still costs us upfront, a clause that they have to be here within one hour. So, we are paying for them to be available and to jump up in the middle of the night and be there within one hour. The other one is a maintenance that, no matter what happens, they take care of it. So, I'm, I'm, I ask them for both, if possible, because time and material may be a lot cheaper.
But we can't move that?
No. And I have been maintaining our equipment for two, three years. Central Link's service really got bad as far as 911. They didn't wanna deal with 911. They kept, we had, our, our service rep was out of Indianapolis. There's no way he's gonna be here within an hour, no matter what. Uh, and then I was seeing six, eight hours. So, ninety, nine percent of the work done was done by me. It wasn't worth waiting for them to pull somebody if he wasn't, and there was one for Indiana, part of Ohio and Michigan. And, you know, if he was in the middle of another project, it could've been a lot longer than that, so I just took care of it. So, I'm comfortable on most, but there are proprietary pieces of equipment that I can't buy anywhere, I couldn't replace, I don't have the, the knowledge on those pieces of equipment to do anything with it. So...
I would assume we approve the Casidian contract for...
Motion to approve the contract?
I'll second.
A motion second, discussion? Under discussion, um, this copy that he gave me, that Scott gave me, does mention that the parties hereby consent the jurisdiction venue in the federal and state courts of the state of Indiana, so I believe it's the, the one that Mr. Sigler was talking about. Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. All oppose, same sign. Oh, this was already, this was already signed, huh?
Right.
This is signed.